I'd like to call to order the January 22nd, 2018 Business Meeting of the Cincinnati Board of Education. We welcome everyone and request everyone in the audience to please silence your cell phones and electronic devices. Please stand for the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Mrs. Wagner, please call to roll. Mrs. Bates?
Present.
Ms. Fulton?
Present.
Mrs. Copeland-Dansby?
Present.
Mr. Messer? Mr. Morowski?
Present.
Mr. Timmons?
Present.
President Jones?
Here. I need a motion to approve the minutes from the Special Public Meeting, Board Assignments, January 8th, 2018, Special Public Meeting for the Tax Budget Hearing, January 8th, 2018, Organizational Meeting, January 8th, 2018, and the Business Meeting of January 8th, 2018. So move. Is there a second?
I just had one quick clarifying point on the minutes.
Can we get a second first and then we'll ask? Can we get a second?
Second.
Thank you. Question?
Just a quick discussion, just to point out, the very end of the Business Meeting, the regular Business Meeting, that started at 6:30, the last assignment, number four, was to investigate the effect of the language used in the idea preschool grant, and this may be the former English teacher, but it was affect, not effect, to investigate whether we can affect the language used in the idea grant, not the effect of the language. So just wanted to make the...
The recommendation is to revise.
Just to revise, so whether we can affect the language, correct, as opposed to the effect of the language.
I think Ms. Davis or Ms. Bruckner have that, it was the revision. Okay.
Thank you.
Question? Ms. Copeland-Dansby?
I do. On page one of the Special Public Meeting, January 8th, I believe it's lacking detail of the conversation. I noticed board assignments and adjournment. Is that intentional?
Which, what date is that?
January 8th, page one.
I can't, can anybody speak to that? I would assume that that's just kind of the practice of the minutes?
I'm sorry? Oh.
They told they something recorded, so are you talking about this one or this?
No, on the very first meeting, Special Public, January 8th, there was a roll call and agenda and an assignment. I'm sorry, roll call, agenda, adjournment, there's no information, it just mentions A, board assignments, B, adjournment. There was quite a bit of discussion there, unless I'm missing something? It was the meeting before the text.
I'll have to follow up on that because this was the meeting that we were in, right?
Yes.
And also, even though it comes on, are not that detailed?
Okay.
But not having additional notes in the office, but these kind of meetings, the format is not...
I just don't know what I'm voting on.
So if we can find out what, that would be an assignment, but if we can find out what level of detail and then report back, so, but the thing is, we need to pull this from the vote tonight and then re-submit it based on what we find out about the level of detail.
I think it's pertinent because we discussed quite a bit related to committee assignments and committee structure.
Okay, so we will pull, that's what we're voting on, minutes number two, three, and four. Question?
On the minutes, January 8th, 2018, page, beginning on page 21 through 23, it's the information related to the report of the Ad Hoc Board Priorities Committee. Are we, are we voting to accept these minutes as they are and they are the rule of where we're moving forward? I don't understand.
Ms. Treasure Wagner, do you have any comment on that?
You're asking about the report of the Ad Hoc Board Priorities Committee?
Right, we're voting on minutes from the January 8th meeting. I have questions from page 21 through page 24.
May I comment? The minutes of the Ad Hoc Committee has previously been approved.
Okay.
So that's, I don't, is that the question that you're asking?
No, I'm asking, we're taking a vote to accept the minutes from the January 8th meeting, pages 21 through 24. I guess I have questions, are we voting to accept these or?
Yes, you are...
They've already been accepted?
No, you're voting to accept them.
Right, so they've not already been accepted.
Is there a specific question, I mean, is there something specific in there you want to...
The report of the Ad Hoc Board Priorities Committee. I'm asking, are we, are we accepting these particular, in specific, the recommendations of the Ad Hoc Board Committee related to the Public Engagement Committee and the actions that are listed? Okay, that's my question.
Okay.
Is there, Ms. Fulton?
I would, I'm not sure, but my understanding is that the ad hoc recommendations had been...
That's what I'm trying to understand.
Adopted prior to these, so those have been adopted and recommendations, but it doesn't mean we're re-adopting them here.
That's what I'm asking, essentially.
Well, and that's what I responded to. You asked and I said that they had already been reviewed and accepted.
Okay. I think the treasurer said something different, but I'm still continuing. Please.
These minutes are the official minutes of the board. These are minutes of what's already happened in the past meeting. And that if there's anything in there, everything's already been approved.
Got it. Got it, that's my only question. Thank you, sorry for the delay. Thank you.
Okay, so we are pulling, number one, the Special Public Meeting to review for content, and then the number two, three, and four, we have a motion and a second. All in favor of acceptance of those minutes?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. The minutes are approved as presented. Okay, this evening's presentation will begin with board appreciation. Ohio Governor John R. Kasich proclaimed January 2018 as School Board Recognition Month. In the state of Ohio, he believed that through partnership with teachers, school administrators, staff, and parents, school board members provide vital leadership and support for our schools. He also thanks school boards for their service and for the positive difference school boards make throughout the state of Ohio. So I'd like to turn over this part of the presentation to Ms. Lauren Worley, our Chief Strategic Communications Engagement Officer.
How do I do this? Thank you, President Jones, you're the first person who's got my title right since I started the job four months ago, so much appreciated. Hi, everyone, we're here to, we are here to celebrate School Board Member Appreciation Month, and we're going to start with our host school, Spencer School for Gifted and Exceptional Students.
Hello, my name is Kara Cotton, and on behalf of the Spencer Center staff and students, we would like to welcome Superintendent Laura Mitchell, the Board of Education, parents, educators, community leaders, and partners. You could have chosen to host your meeting anywhere else, but you chose our awesome school to discuss those issues that focus on our wonderful district and students. Thank you. Here at Spencer, our student body has been working on and acknowledging character strengths. There are a total of 24 character strengths. Because of our time, I will not go through each strength, but please feel free to check out these strengths posted throughout the building. This evening, we wanted to acknowledge eight individuals that come to mind when we think of positive character strengths and those strengths, and those strengths that we will, that have and will compact, impact our district and the students of Cincinnati Public Schools. This, these eight individuals exhibits the following top strengths: Hope, love of learning, perspective, teamwork, judgment, bravery, and most of all, leadership. Would the following individuals please stand and remain standing? Superintendent Laura Mitchell, Board Member and President Carolyn Jones, Board Member and Vice President Erica Copeland-Dansby, Board Member Eve Bolton, Board Member Ryan Messer, Board Member Melanie Bates, Board Member Lannis Timmons, and Board Member Mike Morowski. This evening, we've presented you each with a small token of appreciation from some of the students here at Spencer Center. Students create a character strength poster for each of you to display somewhere in your office or home. These strength posters will remind you of just how important you are to all of us and how important it is to continue to let these strengths shine. The students of Spencer Center want to say thank you for all that you do and for being you. Keep up the good work. Please give our superintendents and board members a round of applause.
You can sit down now. Hello, my name is Ruben Whitehead, and I'm in 4th grade at Spencer. I really like this school because it's just, like, they push us beyond our limits and I really like that. And this is a picture of a wolf, which is our school mascot, and an eighth grader drew it.
My name is Maria Min, I'm in 5th grade, and I'm going to read a poem by my classmate Marquez Whitehead. Just a small reminder, so that you'll always know, we surely appreciate how you help children grow.
Hello, I am Luisa Joy, I am a 5th grade student, and I will be reading a poem by one of my classmates. Work, oh work, you work so hard, for us, we know how far you would go, for us, you work so hard.
My name is Jax Marshall, and I'm in the 7th grade, and in appreciation of you being here, I drew a wolf, which is our school mascot.
Thank you.
That's pretty cool.
Hello, I'm Jen Thompson, I am the student body president of the student council. On behalf of my student, of my fellow student body, I would like to say thank you for being here.
You guys are terrific, we're, you are now deputized members of the Office of Communications and Engagement. I'm taking you on the road. I'd now like to introduce our team from Parker Montessori, I think Parker Woods Montessori. Come on up, guys.
Hello, my name is Suzanne Knoll, I'm the art teacher at Parker Woods Montessori. First of all, we'd like to thank all of you for the hard work that you do. Parker Woods Montessori students created these portraits in the pop art style made famous by Andy Warhol, Roy Lichtenstein, and Cincinnati Public Schools graduate Tom Wesselman. These portraits are mixed media using manipulated photography, markers, and tempera paint. As we present these gifts to you for all that you do, each student will read a section of Cincinnati Public School Board's vision, mission, and strategic goals that are written in the background of each portrait. I'd like to introduce Julian Lopez Ortega.
My portrait is of Eve Bolton, vision, Cincinnati Public Schools will be a community that ensures equitable access to a world-class education, unleashing the potential of every student. Thank you. Oh, I love you!
I did my portrait of Mike Morowski, mission, we educate all students with rigor and culture of excellence and to develop, to develop, to develop engaged citizens who are prepared for life.
I did my portrait of Carolyn Jones, great communities, cultivate a robust and inclusive network of engaged parents, community, and other stakeholders that works together to build safe, vibrant schools at the center of safe, vibrant communities.
I made a portrait of Melanie Bates, supported creation of highly engaging learning environments in which every child, every day engages in an ideal balance between rigorous learning opportunities relevant to our dynamic world and, at the same time, enjoys the focused concern of caring adults.
Thank you so much.
Erica Copeland-Dansby is the board member I did my portrait of. Great systems, ensure that all operations and resources of every type are equitably distributed and singularly and systemically focused on high academic achievement for all students.
My portrait is of Ryan Messer, great learning choices, provide for expanded learning opportunities and choices for all students that reflect a shared concern for the whole child and demonstrate appreciation for every student as a unique individual.
I'll take that on his behalf, thank you.
I chose my, I chose Lannis Timmons for my portrait, great people, enable the recruitment, growth, and advancement of distinguished professionals committing to serving diverse students with a high regard for equity and in a manner characterized by rigor, innovation, and accountability.
I did my portrait of Laura Mitchell, she was a Cincinnati Public School kid, just like I am. Laura Mitchell's portrait has the names of Cincinnati Public Schools in the background to remind us all the mission, vision, and strategic goals are there to help all Cincinnati Public Schools students grow up to be the best people they can be.
Wow, that was great, can we get another round of applause for all our presenters tonight?
These are amazing.
Lauren, can the board members show everyone their pictures?
Yes, and I was trying to pull up our, the pictures of our pictures. Well, I'll, there we go. We're going to skip the PowerPoint, guys, that I did, because that's really lame compared to what you just saw. But here you are. Want to thank you guys all who presented tonight, and here's those pictures, so you can all see a little bit better.
Thank you.
Before the, before the students leave, before the students leave, if you could just give us a couple more minutes, because we'd like an opportunity for board members to make comments or ask questions. And while Ms. Worley is continuing to pass out the certificates, let me just start by saying that how much we thank you and appreciate this celebration of Public Education Week. We're really, really happy to be here tonight, this is a beautiful school, and we've heard, we know that there are really, really great things happening here as well as Parker Woods, which is close to where I live, so I'm very happy to see, have Parker Woods here as well. I also wanted to share with you, and then I'll open the floor up for comments, on Saturday, this past Saturday, the board had a retreat. And this is where we take opportunity for board development. We also utilize the 24 character strengths to identify each other's strengths and ways that we can work better as a team. So it's really a nice thing to have the students recognize the importance of those character strengths. And I think we have a lot to learn from our students, they can also teach us something. So I am happy and pleased to have them presented these gifts, as I'm sure the other board members are, keep doing the excellent work, working on those character strengths, continue to work on those throughout your life, because in the end, it's all worth it. So I'd like to open up for questions or comments, even for the young people who have presented from both Parker Woods and Spencer. Yes, Mr. Morowski?
I would just like to thank all the young people who came out tonight to spend time with us, and thank you especially for this great painting and my awesome frame that'll go in my office, that already has a lot on the walls. Board Member Copeland-Dansby already remarked that it looks like a college dorm room, but they're very professional, great posters, but it is homey, I prefer homey. So this is going to go up tonight or tomorrow, I really appreciate you all. You know, it is, it is hard work, and it's easy to do when you know that we're doing it on behalf of you all. You're, you're the ones that, I'll speak for me at least, that give me my guidance and all the best ideas, they come from you, so don't be strangers. If you ever want to give a tour of your school and show off the neat things going on, I love learning from, from you all, so thanks so much for being here, and thanks to Spencer for letting us hang out tonight. This has been great, I joked, can I move to adjourn the meeting now, because this was being great already? But we won't, we're going to stay and we're going to work hard for y'all, so thank you so much.
Thank you. Ms. Copeland-Dansby?
I second to adjourn the meeting right now.
All in favor?
It's fantastic when we have the opportunity to come out to our schools and come face to face with our parents, with our students, and with our, with our administration and our teaching and support staff, so thank you very much for the, the time tonight. I did see someone special in the audience, our very own teacher, Ms. Diana Pleasant, is she still here? She left. Ms. Diana Pleasant was my very own son's first through, no, 4th through 6th grade teacher, and I'm glad to see her here. So you guys are off to an amazing trek here at Spencer. We're so very, very proud of the work, and so you should know that our superintendent is always working on your behalf as well as our board, and so congratulations for an awesome, cool school building, and thank you again for the, the great opportunity to be here tonight and for our wonderful gifts, thank you so much.
Yeah, I don't think I've ever been to a school board meeting where half the people in the audience were our own students. This is really awesome, thank you so much for coming out, it really means so much to me as a board member, and I know all of our, all of my colleagues, that you care so much to come out, and you know, I'm, I'm actually, you know, pretty humbled that you're thanking us, because you're the ones who are making it happen. You know, we make up the rules, pretty much, but you're the ones who do all the work, so thank you for doing that for us.
Yes, I got appointed on the school board, and during my interview process, I talked about the kids being the bullseye, and when I see this type of work being done, that, that's a good example of what I'm talking about, and you guys did a great job and continue to do so.
I want to just thank you so much, not just for being here, but being here every school day, too, because you are challenging us to rise to the level that you are expecting of yourselves. So thank you, parents, and thank you, staff, and most particularly, thank the students of both of these schools. A member of my family does attend Parker Woods and raves every day about it, and I know people feel that same way about Spencer, so thank you again, we will try to be worthy of you.
So before our students leave, just a, a closing comment, to apologize on behalf of Ryan Messer, who is ill. So we all know, this is that time of year where folks are ill, and we thought it would be better if he stayed home, so we didn't want to be sick. So finally, I just want to say thanks to my fellow board members for the hard work you all do, thanks to the superintendent for giving us vision, and thanks to a person who really makes it all happen because she manages the money, and that's important. And Jen Wagner, who is sitting on the end, is a part of this nine-person team, and truly, we work hard to be a team, so I, I want to also thank her for the work that she's done. Much appreciated. So as, as we move on to the agenda and the students, if they have to go, that, that would be fine, but our next presentation will be, will be from Lauren Worley, our Chief Strategic Communications and Engagement Officer, who will be presenting on communication and engagement.
I'm going to let my posse leave. You guys are really quiet and orderly, so I'm going to go ahead and get started, good job, all right. Not only can they paint, but they can, they can do it all. Thank you, thank you, President Jones and the school board, thank you for the opportunity to present our communications, marketing, and engagement strategy for Cincinnati Public Schools. Thursday will mark my fourth month here at CPS, and I might add, also my fourth month of living here in Cincinnati, so the timing is perfect to update you on our progress and our strategic direction moving forward. I wanted to start tonight, because you all know how much I love space, just go back one, Mr. Edwards, thanks, with this image of Cincinnati, this was taken last year by astronaut Shane Kimbrough aboard the International Space Station. This is Cincinnati from 250 miles above the earth, and it's almost all of us, it's, I don't think, Silverton didn't make it in there, but it's almost all of us, and I look at this picture to keep in mind the awesome task before us and perspective. We have big goals and a bold vision, and we have a lot of small tasks we need to accomplish every day to keep moving forward. The students of Cincinnati Public Schools deserve and rely on the leadership of the Office of Communications and Engagement to ensure they have access to the opportunities for school enrollment, social services, opportunities that enhance their learning outside the classroom, and clear and concise information that impacts their academic careers. In short, in every way and in everything we do, we are ensuring that our kids are prepared for life. In the interest of time, I've organized my presentation tonight to focus on the following topics. First, organizing and mobilizing the Office of Communications and Engagement, improving efforts to tell the good news of Cincinnati Public Schools, expanding the effectiveness of our community engagement, and specifically, the use of our website as a tactic to accomplish all of this. My first assignment here was to establish and develop a new operation based on the board administration's vision for improving communications. I'm pleased to report that we've successfully brought together the former Public Affairs Department, Family Community Engagement Department, and the Customer Service Center, under one umbrella, the Office of Communications and Engagement. This team includes all the things that you see on the screen in front of you, media relations, marketing, publications, including our magnet guide, high school guide, Code of Conduct, and district calendar, our website and branding, engagement with all our PTOs, PTA's, local school decision-making boards, and other advisory councils, the administration, excuse me, working with our Title I parent involvement, our community leader, our community learning center leadership, including leading out-of-school time programming, learning center leadership, including leading out-of-school time programming, tutoring, grant administration, and the professional development and support for our school community coordinators, and resource development to maintain our nationally-recognized CLCs, our MORE and our Girls to Women programs, and our other peer leadership programs, enrollment process and policy for CPS, as well as charter and parochial schools, and an expanded anti-bullying response, including a full-time social worker. As you may know, we've relocated all 24 staff under one roof in the front of the education center to provide easier public access for our externally-facing team and to improve our collaboration. I'm also in the process of filling three vacancies on our team, communications officer, digital content coordinator, and a manager of our CLCs. And I think at least two of the students who are here tonight could probably ably serve on that team. And I would just take a second to thank Superintendent Mitchell, Bill Mooring, Robin Brandon, and the entire team who supported this effort because it was a really big move and we got it done in three months, from soup to nuts. Sharing the good news. I was inspired to join the team at Cincinnati Public Schools because this is truly a school district that's making remarkable progress and providing incredible academic offerings for our students. We have great stories to share, but we've got to do a better job sharing them. So here's some things we've done to improve that. To begin, we've made it easier for our school staff and others to make sure we're aware of the good things happening in our schools. Last month, we rolled out a good news submission form to our principals and other internal stakeholders. We're re-establishing relationships with reporters and opinion leaders throughout Cincinnati and the state, and we've taken steps to make it easier for reporters to get ahold of us. Believe it or not, our media page used to say you had to call our office. Now they have my cellphone number. It's, that's where we started. We've begun to develop an impressive earned and social media plan, and I anticipate this plan will get wings when our new communications officer joins the team within the next month. Our superintendent has her own podcast. And we're in the early stages of a very exciting project, establishing our own CPS YouTube channel. Some other key strategies we have been and will continue to deploy include implementing an earned media strategy that increases positive public sentiment, strengthen our key communicators in the Cincinnati community, and help engage, excuse me, to help carry CPS's good news and positive message to the greater community, develop an ongoing marketing strategy to share that good news, and further establish CPS as a national leader in public education. And next, I want to move on to our community engagement work. This is another area where CPS has boundless potential to increase our effectiveness and expand our influence in the community. Our goal here is to build partnerships with families and community stakeholders to positively impact student success. I'm working with the team to reorganize our efforts to maximize our effectiveness. Top priority is, one of our top priority, excuse me, priorities, is to evaluate how we can better utilize our LSDMCs, and we'll be working with the board on this effort. We're working to meet the board's established goal of ensuring we have functional parent organizations at all of our schools as well. We need to meet our parents where they are. We can't expect busy parents to continually come to us for information. So whether we move more workshops and information to an online format, or meeting parents, you know, at their major places of employment, as an example, our future public engagement outreach will make accessibility a major factor in everything we do. And we're going to expand use of our thought exchange and other survey mechanisms to get a better pulse on what's on the minds of students, parents, and community members. A key tactic in our continuous improvement in this area is that we're creating unified communications and engagement plans for every issue our department undertakes, whether that's notifying parents about the changes in Ohio graduation requirements, or magnet enrollment, or, as an example, our recent major issue with the ECOC closure. Oh, sorry, I'm sorry, Dion, can we go back? Because I did want to just spend a second here on my customer service center stats. This is since the beginning of August, 45,604 calls. Those are not the calls to the switchboard. Those are the calls that come directly to staff or have been transferred to staff. I can't even count the switchboard calls for you. So that's a pretty impressive number. 2,800 in-person visitors to the, to this, to central office, and we've processed over 1,300 non-CPS enrollments and over 1,200 CPS enrollments at central office. That's not the enrollments that occur at each of the school sites. Okay, Dion. Thank you, sir. So I wanted to spend a minute on our website. Back in 2013, we conducted a parent climate survey, and our respondents indicated that the district website and the school websites are actually the least-used tool for communications with them. They prefer email, they prefer to use our app, and so forth. I found this information interesting, and what I can't answer for you is why. Meaning, I don't know if that means they're unaware that we have a website, or the functionality of that website, or if it's that they prefer to access our information from social media. Regardless, it's my belief that the website remains a central hub that we can utilize to communicate with current parents, prospective parents, our teachers and staff, interested community members, opinion leaders, policymakers, and of course, our students. I'm in the process of hiring a digital design coordinator who will work to ensure our flagship CPS website and our school websites are aligned with federal guidelines. Most, more importantly, this individual will work with our web editors to develop and consistently develop, excuse me, develop and consistently deliver compelling content to maximize the effectiveness of our site. For the benefit of all our members, we have web editors who are paid a stipend to maintain the flow of information, and they are appointed directly by the principal, and they work with my team to make sure we're getting the good local news on those websites and keep the local flavor of each of the schools. In 2018, we'll be holding more regular trainings for this group on best practices to ensure they have the skills to produce compelling and compliant websites. Most importantly, we're going to be establishing a regular audit process for our site to ensure that it's consistently and accurately up to date. I wanted to provide you a few stats, as you can see here as well. These stats are just for the last month. So we've had over 364,000 hits on our website. That's a lot. Our most popular pages, of course, are the homepage, which is where you get the information about school closure. So I have to assume that there's a lot of traffic driven that way. But Power School, our alerts and policies and our calendar also had a significant number of views. And I wanted to highlight for you, actually, the number of hits we got from the employment, on the employment site. Over 6,000 views directly to our employment site. So I thought that was pretty interesting. People want to come work for us, is what I took away from that. So some good things to come. I talked a little bit about this, and I'm looking forward to get your suggestions and have a dialogue. We're mobilizing our good news ambassadors. I just met with the Cincinnatus folks today, and they have over 50 people who are committed and dedicated to sharing the good news about CPS, and we're going to strengthen that. We're going to strengthen our LSDMCs, working with our buddies over at ITM. We're going to launch a live chat function on the site, and we're going to launch a My Tomorrow app as well. We're going to launch a video series on career-based learning. I'm very excited about that. We're going to be doing more on our IM CPS communications internally. We're going to be doing more community conversations and working with the board and administration. We're going to be coming up with those topics and deploying that. And then finally, we're going to have stronger connection and collaboration with community leaders. And at the bottom, the thing I get most excited about is the My Tomorrow TV YouTube channel, which is really going to be content-driven by our students. And I'm really excited about what that will look like and the shape that it will take because it's really their stories to tell and share with us. Communications and marketing is, and engagement's my passion. And the truth is, I could talk with you guys all night about ideas and ways to improve our processes. So in the interest of time, I'll go to my last slide, and I'll end my remarks here. But, Dion, if we could just go back to that. If you see that little arrow there, that's an image taken from the Cassini spacecraft a year or two ago, and that little dot is Earth. That's all of us. That's everyone who's ever lived, everyone who will ever live, everyone who's living now, just in that one little spot. And I really believe that Cincinnati and Cincinnati Public Schools is the center of this universe in which we're looking at. And we have just, it just, again, perspective to remind ourselves that we can be as great as we want to be. Our only limitation is our time and our energy that we put into it. So with that, I'm happy to take your questions and anything else. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Worley. Do board members have questions or comments? Ms. Bolton?
Yeah. Thank you for that report, and thank you for the last four months. It's a great, hopeful sign that the CPS story and narrative will be out there, and I really appreciate it. Just a couple things. I think it's, when we look back, I think part of the role you will play, as the superintendent has already described to us, and that is increasing the transparency in the district internally and externally, that it isn't just about the good news, but indeed, it's the whole narrative, and even sharing sometimes the bad news so that we can learn from it. So I think our superintendent's so committed to the transparency phase of this, of this district that I think you're essential for providing that. I would also ask that, that we review those places in the law, in Ohio Revised Code and ODE as well, where indeed, it's mandated that the community be involved with the decisions. I think it's a tendency of any school district, especially the big ones, to kind of forget that occasionally because there's so much work to be done. But indeed, there are many, many things where the law requires community involvement, community engagement, even community power to not only participate, but impact. And I think those would be another good way fundamentally to start to evolve the reality and the image of the district to the community. But I am, I'm so encouraged by your presence and so encouraged that the superintendent has, shall we say, almost, not financially, but at least from a standpoint of organization, almost given you carte blanche to figure out how to do this better. We know the treasurer wouldn't allow her to do carte blanche, but welcome.
With discretion, with discretion.
Thank you for being here, and thanks for making this big difference because it's huge for our future. We are in a growth mode, and more than ever, we need the story to be told.
Thank you, Ms. Bolton. Any other questions or comments? Ms. Copeland Dansby?
Thank you so much, Lauren. It's been a pleasure to work with you. When you said four months, I thought it had been at least a year.
Feels like it, doesn't it?
It does. And so your, your presence with us is so refreshing. I appreciate your four broad topics and how you've narrowed down to detail there. Also, I'm just impressed with how you put together a whole office area for our public to be able to engage there. So I'm really encouraged by the things that I've heard you say. I want to ditto what Ms. Bolton mentioned related to parameters, related to our Ohio Revised Code, ESSA, as well as ODE. And I would encourage you that throughout these broad topics that we keep those kinds of things in mind. And then I also want to ask you how we, seven folks, can be ambassadors. That sounded really cool. I want to be an ambassador. So if you can let us know how we'll do that. And then on a very serious note, our LSDMCs, because that's where decisions are made in our schools. And so any way that we can empower our local school decision-making body, folks to invigorate their schools and to be hands-on and involved, I think that's a good thing. It is our community and our students and our families, you know, like we see here tonight, who are our constituents, and we owe them their voice. And so I'm looking forward to continuing to partner with you through these brilliant ideas that you've come up with. Thank you.
Other questions or comments? Board members? Thank you, Ms. Worley. We really appreciate it.
You guys let me off easy, so I appreciate that. Thank you very much.
Thank you so much. Okay. Mrs. Bates, please present the retirements.
Yes. We have two of our valued employees who've decided to retire, and they are civil service personnel employees. Freddie Cobb and Mary Holston are retiring, actually coming up this spring, so, in summer. They've made their announcement, and we want to acknowledge them and thank them for their service and wish them well in their new ventures.
Thank you, Ms. Bates. Are there any kudos? Ms. Bates?
Again, well, I want to recognize Ms. Phyllis Davis.
Uh-oh.
Who was honored during the Martin Luther King Breakfast as one of the dreammakers of our community. Besides working for the seven of us, which is a challenge in itself, she is a leader in fitness and wellness in Cincinnati Public Schools. So we thank you for your leadership and want to make sure that everybody who's watching knows, you know, what wonderful work you're doing in the community, in addition to, you know, being so diligent and helpful to us as well. Thank you, Phyllis.
I'd like to ditto that, on behalf of everybody. So, you know, this board could not operate the way it does without these two ladies who are the foundation. And oftentimes, they don't get acknowledged and recognized for the work that they do. And so, given that this is Board Appreciation Week and Public Education Week, we really do value the work that you all do and the other administrators. So thank you all for the work you do. Any other kudos? Thank you. I'm sorry, Mr. Murawski.
It's obvious that these awesome kids from Parker Woods and the Spencer Center were able to get up and present like they did to us and do the things they did because of the teachers of both schools. So I want to give kudos to the teachers and the schools that helped these kids get to this point because that was pretty impressive and I loved it. So kudos.
Thank you. We are now at the point of our agenda for hearing of the public. Each speaker has three minutes to speak, and Mrs. Wagner will be our timekeeper. When the buzzer goes off, your three minutes are up. Please refrain from discussing any personal items. When your name is called, please come to the podium to speak. Our first speaker is Peg Conway, LSDMC Pleasant Ridge Montessori.
Thank you. Naturally, I am a member, I'm, I live in Amberly Village, where I also serve on the Village Council. Just recently, I enthusiastically accepted an appointment as our community's representative to the LSDMC at Pleasant Ridge Montessori. Though my children are grown and never had the opportunity, never did attend that school, PRM has been on my radar since its early days. One of my first activities as a new council member in 2006 was going to the groundbreaking for the present building. Through my tenure on council, I have witnessed the growing pride in PRM and its rising profile as a neighborhood school. It's not a coincidence that the business district and residential real estate in Pleasant Ridge are thriving with PRM as a strong anchor to the area. As a somewhat familiar newcomer to the LSDMC, I think I bring fresh eyes to the work of the committee. And I have enjoyed being part of our most recent discussions surrounding enrollment growth at the school and designing ways of approaching it. We've had the benefit of meeting with some district officials as well as part of that process. You will soon receive a letter from our committee outlining further our suggested approaches going forward. And so this evening, I just want to invite each of you as well to bring fresh eyes to the situation at PRM, and I look forward to engaging with you further to take public education in Pleasant Ridge, Amberly Village, and Gulf Manor to the next level. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Conway. Our next speaker is Jason Shamley, also LSDMC Pleasant Ridge Montessori.
My name is Jason Shamley. Thank you for the chance to make a few comments. I'm a parent volunteer with the Operations Committee of LSDMC. In addition, in the neighborhood, I'm the president of the Pleasant Ridge Development Corporation. And similar to Peg, just want to voice my support for the letter that was sent on Friday that I think maybe you received earlier today and you'll be reviewing. Personally, I marked my time in the neighborhood by the school. I moved in a couple months before it first opened in 2008. And over the past nine years, I've seen firsthand the impact the school's had on our neighborhood as a resident, as a community leader, and since the beginning of this school year as a parent at PRM. The story's pretty incredible, dating far before my involvement and time in the neighborhood. And it was created, I know, through incredible vision and partnership between the Board of Education, the administration, the staff, the community, a whole host of folks that were involved, like I said, long ago. It's really become a neighborhood school of choice and is drawing new families, as Peg mentioned, to our neighborhood, to our city, to our community, to the district. People are seeking out PRM. However, in large part due to the success, the facility has really, or I should say, the school has outgrown itself, the facility, and there's operational challenges that have come with that. They require attention of the board and the administration and our community in order to ensure the continued vibrancy of our school. So as we mentioned, the letter was sent on Friday, a proposal that LSDMC has prepared that we believe addresses both short-term operational needs for the coming school year as well as puts a process in place to work, again, in partnership to come up with more long-range solutions as our, as our school continues to grow and evolve. Again, with the goal ultimately to be for sustainability for the school long-term to ensure its success. So we look forward to your review and response of the letter. So we look forward to your review and response of the letter, and we're very excited for continued partnership between our community and, again, the board and the administration, the staff, and all involved as we work together to move our school and our community forward. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chamley. Finally, Connor Reichardt.
Hi, my name is Connor Reichardt and I am a student at CPS Schools. And I'm here for Boy Scouts. It is a requirement for two merit badges to go to a, like, something like this, and I chose this. And I went to Sands Montessori last year and now I'm at Walnut Hills. So I just wanted to introduce myself. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We, Mr. Reichardt, Mr. Reichardt, we look forward to you taking one of these seats up here. Thank you. Mrs. Bates, would you please present the resolution for board consideration?
Yes, I have a resolution approving policy 6835 Audit Committee. I move this resolution approving this policy, adopting this policy as written.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion, comments?
I'll just, the addition, the policy stands, or I guess it's the Charter of the Audit Committee Policy, I guess we're calling it. But we've also added more, a more specific way to, that explains the appointment process. So it's clear to people who are interested in becoming a member of the Audit Committee how to go about doing that and how the board will conduct the, the application and adoption process or appointment process.
Thank you. Ms. Copeland, Danzby?
I want to publicly thank former Chair Melanie Bates, I've got to get all these titles right, New Year, for taking the time to lead the group in conversation to get us to the point where we are now. I think in reading this, I'm so pleased that we have created a, a new policy that does inform the community as to how to get involved. And I think it takes a lot of pressure off the committee itself to accept new members. Several meetings ago, we moved to accept four new members, and so I'm excited to meet them as a part of finance this year. Thank you.
Thank you. Superintendent Mitchell, do you have a report? I'm sorry, we missed the vote. That's important. There's, there's a motion to approve. Is there a second? Yes. Yes, there was a second. May I ask who seconded it? Okay.
Mrs. Bates?
Aye.
Ms. Bolton?
Aye.
Mrs. Copeland, Danzby?
Aye.
Mr. Morosky?
Aye.
Mr. Timmons?
Aye.
President Jones?
Aye.
Superintendent, do you have a report?
I do. First of all, I'd like to acknowledge and bring your attention to, I'm sure you probably noticed, in the superintendent's recommendation in the Civil Service section, we had a staff member, a valued staff member who passed away, Mr. Donald Jarman. He was a custodian at Rose On Condon. Just want to express our condolences to his family and thank him, thank his family for sharing him with us.
Thank you.
In addition, I'd like to also report that last week, members of our staff, we met with representatives from the state to discuss a junior ROTC program for the upcoming school year. And so we're really excited and very happy about that work. In addition, we met with representatives from Portman and Brown's Office regarding service academies, which are really an opportunity that our students could take part in in terms of going away to a service academy where you can receive a four-year degree, become an officer, and then serve five years within the military and go into a very lucrative industry. And so that is another way that we're bringing opportunities for our kids. And when we talk about the military, we aren't talking about kids just going straight into the military in terms of the ranks, but also going through these service academies and coming out with a degree and then serving our country. In addition, I'd like to highlight that last week, we launched out of our Talent Development Office under Susan Bunty's leadership, we launched our very first Lunch and Learn series for our staff members. And so we had close to 30 people attend from 12 different offices. The topic was around skills to manage stress in the workplace. And so people took away a lot of great ideas. For February, the topic is Open Hearts, and it's really centered around equity in terms of our transgender population and talking about transgender population within our school district. Also, in March, our topic is Women in Leadership. April is the Integration of Technology, and May is Celebrating the Interview. And so we can make sure that we send to you the dates for this Lunch and Learn series. So we're picking up some practices from other industries in terms of business, business industries that offer, offer Lunch and Learn series for their employees. And so more to come with that. It was successful, the first one will continue next year as well. And then last but not least, Walnut Hills on January the 5th was identified as the best public school in the state of Ohio by USA Today. So that is my report.
Thank you. Do I have a motion to approve the revised recommendations of the superintendent?
Still move.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Ms. Wagner, please call the roll.
Mrs. Bates?
Aye.
Ms. Bolton?
Aye.
Mrs. Copeland, Danzby?
Aye.
Mr. Morosky?
Aye.
Mr. Timmons?
Aye.
President Jones?
Aye.
Thank you. Do I have a motion to approve the report of the treasurer?
Still move.
Is there a second?
Second.
I'm sorry.
Yeah, I have an adjustment that needs to be made.
Okay.
So if I can refer you to page two, under section three, the first item on there, Sincere Technology, was miscategorized. It should be an award of purchase and not have been an L certificate. So if you'll make that note, we'll make sure that they get corrected in a minute.
Award of purchase?
Award of purchase, yes.
So we have a motion and a second with revision. Ms. Wagner, please call the roll.
I'm sorry, I have a question, please.
Question?
On page four of your report, Treasurer Wagner, it mentions under Student Services, March on LLC in providing school-wide discipline practices? A consultant to support at-risk students? Do you have any other information or superintendent?
I'm going to add Assistant Superintendent Susan Bunty to come to the floor if she has additional information to provide, please.
Thank you.
Thank you.
That group is going to work with Withrow and West High to look at disciplinary practices that are occurring within their schools.
Thank you very much.
Come off of that long walk.
I'm so sorry.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Ms. Bolton?
Yes, another question, but really a comment, thank you. On page two, also in section three as well, Beck Studios, $7,600 general fund, curtains for the Black Box Theater. I do, and it's not an assignment, but it's sort of a, a point of interest for me to really feel confident that the district is reviewing kind of the refreshing, refreshment, if you will, or the reevaluation of the status of all the additional kinds of theater and performing functions that are performed there at SCPA and all the equipment that is in addition to a regular school or regular high school, not only for maintaining it as the premier facility, but also from a safety standpoint. And so it, it really would be great, and it doesn't rise to an assignment, but just as a concern and an issue that we kind of do a major review and not just depend upon the building to do such, but indeed perhaps get some folks in to, to really walk the premises and see if we're needing the same codes that we need to and what kinds of things need to be replaced in order to preserve its incredible status.
So it's something, something that we will definitely do. I will just highlight, as just another example, Woodward High School was in need of some furniture. And we think back, you say, well, they have a lot of furniture. But when you think about it, they were one of the first high schools that had the new building. So their furniture is, how old now? 10 years old? And so we refresh, thank you, we've been refreshing some of the furniture. So to your point, we are noticing and looking at and making sure that we, you know, make sure that everything is well-maintained, but we'll continue to.
Thank you very much.
Yep, absolutely.
I believe there is a motion on floor and a second. Ms. Wagner, please call the roll.
Mrs. Bates?
Aye.
Ms. Bolton?
Aye.
Mrs. Copeland, Danzby?
Aye.
Mr. Morosky?
Aye.
Mr. Timmons?
Aye.
President Jones?
Aye.
Any queries and updates? I guess I'll get started. Here, as then, we've had some conversation about the ongoing basis meeting, which is, for, for our audience here, it's a meeting that this board has with City Council's PG Settenfeld's Committee. And I'm not exactly sure the name of his committee, but he chaired that committee for quite some time. And we meet on a regular basis, and we were, to the board, we were tentatively scheduled for February 7th, but that had not been confirmed. And so we are working on solidifying some dates. And the dates that were presented to me were the 13th of February. Their regular, let me just say, their regular meetings are Tuesdays, every other Tuesday. So we have the option of the 13th, or we have the option of the 13th or the 27th and every two weeks, or every day two weeks after that. Or we could do a Wednesday morning on the 14th, if that's possible. So we, we really need to get this on the calendar. I believe that the facilitation of the meeting was on a rotation basis, so it is our turn to, to work on managing the agenda and a site. And in conversations with Ms. Kamine, we talked about the possibility of doing another off-site meeting, and it came up, that, that one suggestion came up as maybe a rec center during the day to allow more folks who might be interested to come. So that's something to think about. If you have your calendars out, or, you know, it might just be easier for the sake of time if you could let Ms. Davis know, Ms. Davis or Ms. Bruckner, what date, which one of these dates are available to use, then we can move forward. We're trying to get the meeting confirmed. Ms. Copeland, Danzby?
What are the dates, please?
The first date is the 13th. We can do, which is a Tuesday. The 14th morning is a Wednesday, and the 27th is a Tuesday. So normally, they prefer to do Tuesdays, they prefer to do Tuesdays, but for next month, they are open on the 14th, and that was one of the suggestions that came from this board.
And what time on the 13th and 27th?
Um, one is, well, I can tell you, there are eight. Wednesdays at 11:00, Tuesdays in the morning, they just said in the morning, so I'm not real sure. 10:00, I believe.
So all of them in the morning?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Can we?
Mr. Morosky?
Can we get like a doodle or something like that just sent to all of us with the time and the three dates?
Yes.
And then we can just narrow it down so you can?
We certainly can.
Thank you.
Okay.
Thanks, Phyllis and Pat.
Okay.
Thank you, Ms. Morosky.
I do have other updates, but I'll open it up to the board first. Are there any other updates or inquiries?
I have an inquiry.
Ms. Bolton?
Yes, it's important that the board, with the help of the administration, appoint a replacement on the preschool board.
CPP board.
CPP board, if we could, regarding our opening that we have regarding parent representative. And it would be great if perhaps the president and the superintendent or whomever could get together to figure out, but I would suggest nominations or accept, you know, suggest applications. And the faster that we can move, the better, because that's a very needed position to be filled.
Right. That's actually one of the things I had on. Glad you mentioned it. This, to ditto what Ms. Bolton is saying, we currently, in our partnership with Cincinnati Preschool Promise, we are, we appoint five members to that board. And one of our members, who was the parent representative, resigned. So as Ms. Bolton stated, we are looking for, to replace that seat. And I think it's important for this board to know that that seat also served on the finance committee. So I think we need to begin to, as a full board, talk about what we're looking for, what, what is it, what are the, the expertise and the experience that we want for this particular position? And also to think more about a process, how we do it. So we actually have, if you all recall, we actually have several best practices that we recently worked with. One was when we did the superintendent search, that whole process, thinking about what value that had for us, thinking about if, are there elements of that we could use. We also had the audit committee process that we utilized. And then there's also, CPP itself has a process that they used when they were trying to identify people for their entity. So in this, I think it is going to take us having a full bar conversation. I'm certainly happy to share with administration some of, some of these thoughts. And, but I, I would want everybody on the board, I would ask everybody on the board to consider, or, or offer your ideas and thoughts about what a process would look like. And I was hoping we could do, have some of that discussion tonight, if that's possible, recommendations and how we narrow the selections. Because one of the things we want is certainly an opportunity for the community to provide input. And you know that worked well for us, and we did the superintendent's search, so we certainly want to do that. And so having said that, any questions or comments about how we want to proceed? Ms. Bates?
I mean, since we have already adopted and approved the audit committee process, if we can parallel that as much as possible, I'm not sure that we have anything in writing at all regarding these appointments. You know, even having a, you know, a charter or a policy around that would be helpful and finding out how long the terms are, when the expectations for appointments are. So, I mean, that certainly, as Chair of Policy, I would welcome taking that on. I'm not sure how quickly we want that to occur, but our next meeting would be the third Thursday of the month.
Yeah, I, I think it would be helpful, and this, this should come under assignment, but to ask Cheryl Bronneck to sort of facilitate this discussion and the process. And I think we need to have an opportunity to, for her to develop, give us some idea what the timeframes are, what the timelines are. So I'll make that assignment in the assignment component. Other questions, Connor? Ms. Copeland, Danzby?
As we appoint a parent representative, it would be important for me that we outline the criteria. I heard you say this person also serves on the finance committee?
Yeah.
That is, is that written somewhere?
It was, with the, when they identified the five on the committee, they were selected and identified as members of that committee. So when the, when the parent left, she was on, she was serving on, so that's an open seat. Now, there are four other members, and we already have Ms. Sangriat, Sangregret, I'm sorry, who is also serving on that committee, but.
On the finance committee?
Yes. Let me ask, Ms. Wagner, can you kind of clarify what that role indicated?
So I actually went back and looked at the master agreement, because it's under the addendum in the master agreement. And it states that one, three board members are supposed to serve on the committee, similar to your committee. And each of the representing entities should have one.
One representative on finance committee?
Yes. And so Jasmine, the parent that had to resign, was then replaced by Laura. But I didn't know if that was a permanent replacement or just a temporary one, so she's nodding yes.
Yes, okay.
So there's just, there isn't a vacancy on the finance committee?
There is not a vacancy. There is not a vacancy on finance.
That's what I'm trying to understand.
Okay, okay.
Okay.
So there is not a vacancy on finance, but there is one on the CPP Board.
Correct.
Right. And I did, I did take a stab at drafting a sort of a proposal, and I'd be happy to share it with board members and Cheryl, and it did include the outlining criteria and qualifications.
Okay, good, because my next question was going to be, what is the criteria to be a member? So if we could see that, because I think that needs to be a full board decision as to what the criteria is. Additionally, I love the idea of using the Audit Committee Charter process to mirror that, though I'd like to interject a parental and/or community stakeholder opportunity in developing the criteria as well as the selection.
Yes, I did include all of that in this written proposal that I had, so I'd be glad to share.
Okay, good.
Okay.
Good, thanks.
Other comments? And we'll make the assignment in category. Is there no other, no other questions, inquiries, updates? Well, I do have one, I'm sorry. I'm getting ahead of myself. Okay, so, Public Education Week, we had the opportunity last week, and Ms. Copeland-Dansby represented the board and district in a press conference and event. It was not a press conference, it was a resolution. They presented a resolution in recognition of Public Education Week. Tomorrow, and I don't have a flyer or anything, so I just wanted to announce to the board members that tomorrow, there is a, an actual press conference to be held at Hughes STEM School, and I will be there to represent the board, and there's going to be a number of speakers that include, well, Kathy Wright, of course, as the principal, will be there to lead this event, and I will be there representing the board, the County Commissioner Denise Dreehouse will be there, Cincinnati City Councilman P.G. Settenfeld, and a Hughes STEM student, so we will have student participation in that. And school board member, our state school board member, Pat Grunz, will also be there. So if board members, board members are certainly welcome to come and be a part of that ceremony, and we look forward to that.
What time is that?
This is at 12:30, my apologies. Any other updates or inquiries? Okay, assignment?
I have a question.
You have a question and updates?
Yes. It's an inquiry, related to the board meeting that took place on January the 20th, well, there'll be a written follow-up to give a summary or?
Is this the retreat? Yes. Yes, there will be a written summary.
I guess I'm just wondering.
Yeah, well, it was just Saturday, so the minutes were not ready today.
Right, I'm not asking for minutes, I'm asking for, and, well, we can do it now, if there is an update or that, since, I mean?
Well, no more than, we've shared, I had a conversation with you briefly about it, an update if you can, but that's my ability, so we have the report coming out, so probably no more than we talked about.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay.
So.
All righty. Well, okay. So, assignments, are there any assignments? My assignment would be to ask Cheryl Bronnack to take the lead on this, and I will certainly be willing to talk with her about this. Any other assignments?
I have an assignment.
Mr. Morosky?
And it seems apropos of the subject for the February Luncheon Learn, incidentally. And I don't make this assignment because I'm aware of any incidents. In fact, I think Cincinnati Public School District does an excellent job with our transgender students, but I am new, and I was wondering if I could assign an update on whether there have been incidents or if there are written procedures and guidelines. I know there's not a policy, but if there are procedures or guidelines, and perhaps you'll report out to the Policy Committee, or if it is the pleasure of the full board, perhaps a full board presentation?
Mr. Morosky, I would urge you to have a conversation with Daniel Hoyne, because there was work done on that. So, and it's, there's been an ongoing discussion that was leading to, it wasn't a policy, but it was decided that there was a set of guidelines that needed to be forwarded to our principals, so he will be happy to give you an update on that.
Do you report to Policy Committee then? Would that make, I think that makes the most sense.
I think the board would be interested in that.
And then if the board, yeah, if it's the pleasure of a full board, then yeah, I'd do it at a full board meeting then.
Yeah. So just quickly, Mr. Hoyne, the guidelines were scheduled to be provided, to forwarded to the principals. Can you just tell us what the status of that is?
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay. All right, so maybe on your next agenda, if you have that on your agenda, he can give you a full update on the scope and give you a copy of those guidelines.
On the Policy Committee?
Yes.
Yes, can we, Ms. Davis, can you get that on the agenda for us, please? Thank you.
Thanks, Ms. Bates. Thanks, Sam.
Any other assignments? Ms. Bates?
I have one. Yes, I want to refer to the Policy Committee, a review of the student's cell phone policy, since there's, I've received some input that the cell phone policy we have is enforced differently at different high schools. There have been new studies out regarding the impact of screen time and cell phones on, of students and all, all children, actually, and I believe that this, this policy needs a review based on the input I've received from a number of educators. So at the board's pleasure, I'd like that also assigned to the Policy Committee.
Thank you. Any other, any other assignments? Having no other business to come before the board, I declare this meeting adjourned. Thank you.
Aye.